Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are here for Thursday, May 28th workshop, and we have two items on the agenda this morning. The first one is the auditor evaluation tool, and we will be specific to looking at the tool. We're not going to be working on actually doing the evaluation this morning, but we are open for suggestions and questions. So the second item on the agenda, of course, is our new policy 1.28. And after a short break following Ms. McClung's presentation, we'll turn it over then to Mrs. Dupree Bruno. So at this time, if everyone's ready, we will turn it over to Cindy McClung, and thank you so much, Cindy.
Madam Chair, I don't see Mr. Dupree Bruno. Do we need to wait for her to get started?
She's in the curriculum resource.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Cindy.
How's everyone this morning? Nice to see you all. So the tool that was served, sent us back up is very specific to the statement of work number two that was provided by RSM. So I'm going to share screen so we can take a look at that tool. Are you able to see? Okay, so there are five basic areas: timeliness, the provision of providing progress updates, meeting those project objectives, the accessibility and engagement of the team members, and then communications. And so as you can see, there are a total of four different ratings available for each of those areas with a descriptor under each. And then I'm going to scroll up to the top, and you can see as you put those in, it will give you an overall average, and the rating scale is at the top. So I'm open for discussion.
Board members? Ms. Gittens, yeah, when we share screen, I can't see everybody, so I'll go onto my participant's screen and look for your raised hand that way.
I'll stop sharing since everyone's had a chance to see it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think Ms. Gittens.
Good morning. Do you want us to use the participant raising hand?
That will help because when she does share screen, I can't see everybody.
Okay, I guess my main question is, it's my understanding that this is based off of the SOW from... Okay, so I guess I would ask the question to RSM as a, you know, as a vendor, what are their thoughts?
Trying to make sure I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Clara?
Hi.
Okay. Ms. Ewing, yes, okay, and then participants, if you click on the participant list, and then you want to raise your hand that way, then I can be sure not to miss anybody. But Ms. Ewing, please proceed. Not very well. It's very low. Is your volume up? Little bit better.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Ewing, I'm sorry, no, some members are saying they can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
If too many people are talking at once, I have no idea what anybody said, but I know a couple people made comments. And I have no hands raised, and, okay, Ms. Ewing, let's try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Now, Ms. Ewing, we're hearing the feedback. There's something else, or do you have anything else on? Okay. Is the volume up on your computer? I'm hearing Ms. Gittens talking in your background. Mr. Eldon, can you help us in any way?
No, ma'am, hers seemed to be the only one we're having issues with right now.
Okay, do you hear them?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie Almonte, is it okay if I jump in on this?
Yes, Ms. Ewing is saying yes.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome, Clara. Can you all hear me fine? Even with my accent, all right, good. This is a great start. This is acceptable to us, and I think it sets in place what we need to do to make sure we comply with the statement of work. So far as we're concerned, this accomplishes a great, this creates a great tool for you to judge us by, so we're fine with it.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Board members, any other comments or questions for... Okay, so it looks like, oh, Ms. Patrica, and then Mrs. Morgan?
I think that it's a good start. I don't think we're really going to know how well the instrument works until we use it the first time. So let's use it and then come back for discussion after that.
Thank you very much, great idea. Ms. Morgan, then Mrs. Jordan.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's acceptable to me in terms of the work that was done under the current contract. I don't believe it's a useful instrument in terms of discussing statements of work going forward for new contracts.
Thank you. Ms. McClung, you want to...
Yes, my understanding was that this particular tool was only to be used for this, this evaluation this year, based on that statement of work. The tool that you reviewed a couple of weeks ago at the workshop would be the one moving forward.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I was going to pretty much say the same thing as Kathleen had said, or Ms. Morgan had said, because when I'm looking at even like the timelines, we need to make sure that we know what those timelines are. And so when we're trying to score them on that, what is that? You know, what is the timelines? So we do have to, this is a work in progress, I believe, because I would, I would really like to know what the timelines would be, as well as what the cost is going to be for us, for each of these different things that they will be doing in order to rate them.
Right. So, and thank you for that. And when looking for the timelines, I went back and looked at the dashboard reports, and those all were very explicit with their timelines. So, you know, and this is for this one occasion because we had to base it on the statement of work. Yes.
That was, that was their time, that was their timelines, that they were, once we started getting all the reports, yes, we did have the timelines of how everything was taking place, but what exactly was the established timeframe? So we can't say it's a year from now or two years, we need to know what that is once we start really getting into this.
Right, and I think, Ernie, did you want to reply to that? Please unmute.
Thank you. That's stuff we forget all the time. But I agree with the comments that being made, we have to relate it back to the statement of work. And I know Clara's trying to dial in so she could add comments instead of doing it through the, the virtual meeting that we're doing. So she might have some additional comments to make if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Eldon, is she dialed in?
I believe so. Ms. Ewing, is that you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can everyone else hear, Ms. Ewing? I'm getting a thumbs up. Okay, great.
Perfect, perfect. We agree with everything that you all are saying. That is correct. This, this form is, it's the first year, so you're going to grow upon it each year. And as you grow the function, timelines, all of that's going to be very important. You know, one of the things that we had discussed, you know, months ago, talking about the first project, we knew how, we talked, spoke to you about the importance of the first project and really taking your time. So the district could get comfortable with the approach and with internal audit, given that it's new. But as you grow the function, there's going to be more and more structure, and those are tools that we're going to, if we are still selected to help you all, we're going to provide you different tools, those things for the structure.
You're all good? No, no.
Thank you. Okay, I'm hearing other comments. Mr. Eldon?
My apologies, my mic was open.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right, and then I have a hand up with Ms. Gittens.
Yes, thank you. Well, two things, Ms. Jordan mentioned about cost. And in my understanding, this is an evaluation, so unless in future we put something in there that states, you know, stays within budget and we verify what that budget is, to me, that's the only cost factor as far as evaluating whoever our internal auditor is. Not so much how much their process costs, but we would set a budget and say, and agree upon it. And then if we wanted to add that to the evaluation process, to me, it would be saying, did they stay within the budget and what were the reasons? And give the internal auditor an opportunity to explain why they did or didn't, which kind of leads to the timeline. This is the first time doing this. We have received the updates to know what's going on. And I think we also have to take into consideration, it was the first, the first audit that we did. And, and like Ms. Ewing was saying, that, you know, the staff has to get used to it, the process has to kind of start to flow. So this is the very first opportunity to do this, and I think we need to take that into consideration going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, Ms. McClung, I'll turn it back over to you.
So if there are no changes, then I will finalize this and send it to the board members. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very, thank you very much, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, before we move on, is there anybody who needs a quick break? Okay. Seeing none, and seeing that Mr. Dupree Bruno is on camera and ready. Ms. Bruno, I will turn this over to you and just make the comment that this is probably the first in a series of several discussions that we'll have as we review and fine tune the proposed policy 1.28. Ms. Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. Good morning, Dr. Atkins. Good morning, RSM. Today, we're going to go through some of the highlights of the changes in policy 1.28. We'll go through the revised flow chart. And then there will be a couple of slides from Dr. Desmore discussing the vendor for the whistleblower hotline. With me today, I have Dr. Angela Pruitt, as well as Dr. Desmore, Yuni Desmore, as well as Mr. Frederick Ross. And we will be working together to answer your questions. Mr. Williams was going to be here today, but unfortunately, he's not able to join us. So, Mr. Eldon, if you could please go to line... We'll start with line 348. Okay, so this line, this section discusses a second review committee, and what happens if a board member has a concern about the process or an outcome from a disciplinary investigation. The board member can go and request to the superintendent that a matter goes to the second review committee. This is in consultation with the superintendent, and the superintendent will, will review that, discuss it, and then make a decision about approval of the other extended process in the second review committee. If we can go to line 59. This is another change. We have changed the name of the predetermination hearing to a predetermination meeting. And this will actually be a meeting between the employee and the district council. The employee may have their counsel, this is their opportunity to provide a statement, and they are also able to provide a written statement. If we can go to line 476. We have added an outcome review team, and this is the team that will make the decision with regards to whether or not incident occurred, there was just cause, and make a discipline recommendation. The outcome review team will be comprised of school administrators, principals, and assistant principals. They will be trained to not only be a member of the team, but as well as one of them will chair this particular team committee. If we can go to line 502. This gives a little bit more detail with regards to the second review committee. The superintendent may make a referral to the second review committee. Board members through the superintendent can request that a referral be made to the second review committee. The second review committee will be made up of chiefs, executive directors, and or the school board attorney. The purpose of the second review committee is to review the documentation from the beginning to the results of the outcome review team, and will then make their own recommendation, or they may sustain what was previously done. That recommendation will then go to the superintendent. The final action, which starts on line 530, always rest with the superintendent. And then he will make the requisite recommendation to the board. There are other changes in the document that I know that board members had an opportunity to review. We can answer questions on those changes, but I wanted to give you the most important and impactful changes to go through this morning. Mr. Eldon, if we can go to the flow chart. And while he's getting that up, board members, I do want to make sure that, or at least remind the board that, you know, these policies are your governing documents. This is how you're able to advise the district staff as to what your expectations are and what you would like to happen in this process. And I know that board members are very interested in this particular policy because of its long-ranging impact on the district and our processes with regards to ethics and education, all the way through the disciplinary process. So I want the board members to please take some time, digest the information, ask questions. We will come back with additional workshop as needed so that all of the questions, all of the concerns can be addressed. So this is not the final product, it is not the final document. This is another draft for us to consider so that we can continue to build on that particular draft. With regards to the flow chart. Under employee complaints, they come from various sources: the whistleblower hotline, supervisors, through a website, employee, community members. There is one thing that I want to make sure that the board understands. Our internal auditor, currently it's RSM, they're looking at waste, fraud, and abuse. They are the ones who are getting the information from the whistleblower hotline. When the information comes in, they will also consult with the school board attorney and chief legal counsel. And any information that comes in that is a regular issue regarding employee that does not deal with waste, fraud, and abuse will then go back to HR for processing. Any information that deals with waste, fraud, and abuse will be processed and handled by the internal auditor. Once the complaint comes in, it will then go either through Office of Professional Standards for an investigation or through the Equity and Civil Rights Office for investigation. There will be a manual that will describe a little bit more in detail these processes and define some of these issues and things that we will be using in this process, in this flow chart. I did speak to Dr. Pruitt this morning, and I know that she's waiting for feedback from the board to be able to continue to work on that process and that manual. And she, also, I'll be included in that review of that process in that manual. But right now, what we have is that within 60 days, the investigation will be completed. There will be documentation throughout the investigation. Now, I do want board members to understand that there may be delays sometimes with regards to the 60 days because we can't always control where law enforcement is with their process. So I do want to make sure that you're aware of that. However, in the normal scheme of things, it should be completed within 60 days. The investigation will follow all of the Florida statutes, guidelines, and the Department of Education requirements. From that point, we will then go to the predetermination meeting. The predetermination meeting is for the employee to have an opportunity to present their position. And they can have counsel there, they can have a union representative there, they can have someone else there with them when they present their position. In addition, they will also have an opportunity to write down their position. And that statement can be prepared ahead of time, it could be prepared by their counsel, but it is something that will also be... But it is something that will also be included in the file for this process. And the district will have their staff counsel there in the predetermination meeting as well. Next, and this is probably where the, one of the biggest changes, is that we'll have the outcome review team. And basically, board members, what we have tried to do is enhance the process because I believe that everyone from our superintendent to staff to the board wants to have a process that not only is fair and objective and protects due process, but also gives the perception that we are protecting due process, is objective, and is fair. So everybody is on that same stream of thought, and we want to have something that will benefit the employee as well as protect the district to make sure that we have done what we're supposed to do in protecting our employees' due process rights. So let me go to the outcome review team. It's going to be made up of an odd number of committee members. The team will consist of school administrators, principals, and assistant principals that are not, that are not involved in the school that this particular employee may be working in, as well as not have any other conflicts. So there'll be some type of conflict checked to make sure that there's no bias between the principals and assistant principals sitting on the committee. The administrators will be trained to ensure that they understand the process and understand how to ask questions, how to review the documents. In addition, there will be one of them who will lead this particular team. So they will be trained in leading this team and leading, excuse me, the discussion. The committee members will be able to vote. And they will be determining whether or not something had happened with probable cause, as well as make a recommendation with regards to discipline. The committee will be free to make those decisions without fear of retaliation. Now, the team will then make a recommendation to the superintendent. If for some reason, the superintendent believes that this needs to have a second look, he can send it to the second review committee. In addition, if a board member feels that this needs to be looked at again, they can make a request to the superintendent, and after discussion, a decision superintendent will make a decision as to whether or not it goes to the second review committee. The second review committee will have rotating individuals composed of chiefs, as well as executive directors and the school board attorney. That review committee is more aligned as to an appellate court type of committee, where they will look at the documents from beginning to end and just review the entire process and review how the determination or the recommendation came to be. Now, that committee can also ask for clarification by asking questions or asking for additional documents if there are any. The goal for this committee is to review the entire process and make a recommendation within 30 days. Thereafter, the review committee's recommendation will then go to the superintendent. And then the superintendent is the one who will have the final action as to what recommendation he wants to make to the board. If an employee does not request a DOA hearing, then all of the information will go to the board for action. If there is a request for a DOA hearing, then the the information will be, some information will be given to the board so that the board can make a decision as to whether or not to suspend with or without pay pending the DOA hearing. And then once the administrative law judge has an opportunity to review and hear the evidence on the case, they will issue a report and recommendation, which will be then sent to the board for the board to make a final decision. Now, I do want the board to know that for individuals that were hired after July 2011, the board can stand in as the quasi judicial body to hear everything. However, I believe it is better for the board to continue to send things to DOA, where you have an administrative law judge who is experienced, who can actually complete a full trial and then send the recommendation back to the board. When the recommendation is sent back to the board from the administrative law judge, the facts that were presented at that level cannot be changed. Those are the facts that the board must accept. However, if the board disagrees with the recommendation, they can discuss that and determine what they want to do about the recommendation. But they will have to have written findings and make a justification as to why they're not accepting the administrative law judge's recommendation. At this time, I want to go back to the whistleblower hotline. Basically, we will have a, and yes, Mr. Eldon, if you can put those slides up, please. Basically, we're going to have a third-party vendor that will accept calls in a whistleblower hotline. Those calls will then go to RSM and be filtered out. What and abuse they will handle. Everything else will be going back to HR. At this time, I'm going to invite Dr. Desmore and Mr. Ross to come and explain some of the options we have for the whistleblower hotline.
Good morning to the board, Dr. Atkins, RSM. Mr. Eldon, if you can put that slide up, thank you. So the procurement department, we were requested to begin the procurement process for the whistleblower hotline. We utilize our GovQuote system. It is a e-procurement system web-based that has access and connects government entities with all kind of vendors all across the nation. Using that streamlined process for informal competitive solicitation, given that the threshold, it was going to be expenditure would be below the $50,000 bid threshold. We utilize this system for informal quotes, not a formal competitive solicitation. The invites for this request went out to over 2,000, or to 2,000 registered vendors via the GovQuote system. We cast a wide net, kind of use the category of technology and telecommunications services. Not all of those vendors obviously do specifically hotline services, but we cast that wide net in order to get a competitive responses. We received several communications back and forth from some vendors, but in the end, got seven responses that were received. We evaluated those responses to determine their ability to meet our minimum qualifications. Those being they can run and manage a hotline service, is be able to receive whistleblower hotline calls via several different formats, whether it be phone, email, app, web. And then also had some sort of reporting and case management ability. So once that call is received or that report is received, how is the management of pushing that out to the whomever we've identified to receive that information? Has reporting functions, has archiving, auditable. So it has all those type of features that allow us to have a whistleblower hotline and meet the requirements of our new policy. After reviewing those responses for minimum qualifications, we found five that we deemed to be qualified. And then, so once we had those five that we deemed qualified, we felt we had that apples-to-apples comparison to now to evaluate based on cost. Next slide. During that evaluation, our recommendation that we're procurement is bringing for consideration is Lighthouse Services. Their bid was $5,600 annually with no, with setup included. We evaluated that as being the lowest cost proposal that met the requirements. Some of the features, including that 24-hour, 7-day, 365-days-a-year ability, multiple ways to submit requests via web, they have mobile app. One of the few that submitted that had a mobile app, email, and toll-free number as well. Over 140 languages that they can interpret and have interpretation services for open access. So what that means is, once a complaint is submitted, if two weeks later, that same person wants to come back and add additional information, that that case is still open for them to identify which one they previously submitted and add new information to that case. And again, that case management system. And then they also provide some other employee training, employee materials, instruction materials that they can assist in. So that would be the, our recommendation for a board consideration following our procurement process. We see after a board discussion, if procurement wants us to move forward. You know, next steps would be, you know, kind of vetting through references, continue vetting with RSM, and possibly reaching out to the vendor for some sort of webinar or presentation prior to making a final decision. And that is, kind of summarizes our procurement process on the hotline and open to any questions about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross. I have two hands raised, Ms. Vaughn, and then Mrs. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, thank, thank you. I have two questions about procurement. It's still early for me. First of all, what kind of a cost differential did you have among the five finalists?
So prices ranged from $5,600 annually, which was the lowest, to the highest qualified bid was $24,000. So, you know, about a $14,000, $15,000, excuse me, about almost a $20,000 range in pricing. A couple did have some variable pricing, so they had a annual rate and then a, you know, price per call. So we had to do some, you know, estimating and to evaluate those. But we did, based on that, the $5,600 rate would still be the lowest rate for us.
Okay, and what I would like to see, you said it's based on the lowest rate. And that's good. We always want to be economical. But sometimes the lowest rate is not the best service. I mean, they could be wonderful. I don't know. So a couple of things I'd like to suggest. First of all, that we not just vet this, this top lighthouse, but that we also look at several of the others and vet them. And I wondered if RSM has ever worked with this. I know, I know, you know, RSM must work with quite a few different vendors for hotlines. And if they have any personal experience, I mean, that's what we would really love to know. And again, I think it would be, we'd have more of a basis to judge if we were looking at least at the top three with the three lowest bids, if not the top five. Just in case we're giving somebody that does not have a good reputation.
Correct, and definitely the board chooses we could do that. Again, we evaluated those on, kind of tried to get that apples-to-apples comparison of of looking at their different intake forms and evaluating those and looking at their different case manager reporting and found the, you know, the, you know, the, you know, people were able to cut out two that didn't meet the cut and felt that the remaining five were apples-to-apples. And then Lighthouse came at the lowest cost. But definitely, you know, whatever the board pleases, we could evaluate.
Yeah, I mean, apples-to-apples is great in black and white on paper. But for instance, if I'm having somebody paint my house and I get the lowest bid and I find out, yeah, they use the same kind of paint, but painters are sloppy, I'm probably not going to go. So I would just feel better if we looked at the others and also if RSM has any any experience with this particular vendor or if any of the top five vendors that, that came up are ones that RSM has had personal, you know, personal business experience with to make a judgment on will we get the kind of service that we hope to get. And of course, again, I'm not saying, we're not trying to be economical. I think we're just going to be smart on this.
Yes, I agree, and we definitely want RSM's feedback. And I think one of the, two of the things that would vet kind of your, your wanting to make sure that the service level is appropriate is number one, checking those references. And the things we have already researched is some of the other government entities that Lighthouse currently provides the same services for, a pretty good laundry list of government entities that does also include school districts. So we would definitely vet that. And then also bringing them in for that presentation. That's when, you know, we would kind of get that close-up view of the system. Be able to ask those important and hard questions to, on the right bit.
Okay, I agree, but, you know, normally, we do, even when we hired our internal auditors, we looked at several options. So I would feel more comfortable with at least the top three as a comparison. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Giovinelli.
Yes, thank you. I had my hand up a while back, so this has to go back to, I believe, Attorney Bruno.
Well, Ms. Gittens, can we stick with Mr. Ross now before he has to leave? Okay. Ms. Giovinelli?
Hi. So actually, I would actually agree with Ms. Vaughn. I was going to ask that RSM be involved in the process a little bit more, especially with the references. And I would just be curious to see how long they've been in business, that their, you know, their track record. So I would just add to that a little bit. But I would like to see at least the top, top three in comparison, apples-to-apples. So if that's at all possible, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. RSM, do you have any comments at all in response to those questions?
Hi, this is Clara. We're more than happy to assist the district. We have worked with Lighthouse with another state agency. And we also have another client that's getting ready to implement Lighthouse. So we are more than happy to consult with purchasing as they're going through this process. And we do have, have worked with some others as well. So we're more than happy to give our feedback.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Ross. Okay, let's...
And if I could add one thing, if, yes, if the board does desire to bring in multiple vendors to evaluate, just want to get a little more clarification on, you know, kind of what that looks like. Is that, you know, presented to the board? Is that presenting to, you know, RSM or an internal staff? Just a little more for clarification on where you would like procurement to go if it is bringing in multiple vendors.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross, and we'll, we'll work on getting a consensus regarding that in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bruno? I see, okay. I see Mrs. Morgan and Ms. Patrica have their hands up also. Are your questions in regard to the third-party vendors or are your questions back at the policy?
Third-party vendor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Ross, come on back. Ms. Patrica and then Ms. Morgan?
I'm just not clear.
About the vendors, well.
I'm just not clear on why we're treating this procurement process differently than we would treat any other procurement process. The whistleblower hotline is not an employee of the school board. We have processes in place that have been vetted and continue to be vetted by board advisory committees. I'm not clear on why we're treating this any differently.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patrica. And then, Mrs. Morgan?
And just, I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, thank you for going through the, the regular vetted process and coming forward with your recommendation. I want you to know, I appreciate your work. And it's good to see you.
Yes, good to see you too.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Gittens?
No, Mrs. Morgan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought you were finished, Mrs. Morgan. Go ahead, please.
No, so for me, it's about the procurement process. And I think we ought to follow the, the regular procurement process. I think that it is reasonable to expect I think that it is reasonable to expect that as our employee, RSM, interact with our staff with respect to the procurement process. And that should be the extent of, uh, the board's involvement. Um, I see no reason why we should step outside the regular procurement process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Okay, and now, Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, I mean, I, I quasi, I agree with everyone. The thing I think we have to keep up for most is this is a whole new process. This is something totally different. It's not like we're, um, you know, procuring something that we are familiar with. So I believe that's where the board's, um, involvement was, or should be involved in that. It's a new process that we're setting up. But I agree, working with, um, RSM, uh, currently about how to do that. And we did receive samples of, um, other districts, you know, uh, process. And I'm wondering if we can find out who they use. I mean, they have a process, so we're looking at that. Why not look at some of what the other districts are using? And that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Ross? Did, did you have a comment about that?
No, I mean, we can definitely do, uh, whatever research. Um, you know, we, uh, did follow the, uh, procurement process on this. Um, and, but if we would like to, if the, if we like to look further, we would, we would do some.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Jordan, and then Mrs. Vaughn.
Thank you. I would just like to, uh, thank Mr. Ross as well. I think that we need to make sure that, um, we allow our staff to do the jobs that they're supposed to be doing, which they certainly have done. I don't feel that RSM should have any involvement with them in choosing which, uh, vendors we use. Uh, if they can certainly say, give us information that they have worked with them. But as far as choosing one, I do not believe that they should be, um, involved in that. And thank you again, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Vaughn?
I, I, I would be happy to have RSM, um, look at the top contenders and then give their recommendation. As far as, um, allowing staff to do their job, well, staff has done its job. And I, I feel, I think Ms. Gittens said that this is, this is unique. And there may be questions that we're not asking since we haven't had, um, a vendor such as this. And RSM works with this, these kinds of vendors all the time. So why not use our employee, RSM, to help us out? I'm not asking for a big presentation to the board, but just that it's run by RSM. They look at the top choices and, um, personally, I would feel, um, much more comfortable if we knew that this particular, um, vendor works well with internal auditors et cetera. They have the questions to ask that we don't.
Um, thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Jordan, are you finished? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to say what Ms. Vaughn just said, that, um, RSM runs this. They really don't run it. They work for us. So if I misunderstood what you just said, I apologize. But I just want to make sure that, uh, that's clear. I just want to make sure that there's two separate, there's two separate entities. One is, uh, like a call center that's receiving the information that will be disseminating into either RSM or to the district. And I want to make sure that there is not that, um, it, it's just clear and precise that that's what their jobs are. And if they want to give information of what call centers do, that's perfectly fine. But as far as them being engaged with the process of hiring one, I really don't believe that that's the way to go. Sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay, so I'm the one that suggested that our new employee, um, RSM, work with the, um, with, uh, securing the, a vendor. So I didn't suggest the board doing it. So I don't think that's a policy, and it's a brand-new policy to us that's very in-depth, that we need to make sure we have it right the first time and not, um, four times different. So we've been doing that and, you know, this is the fourth, um, draft, so, um, and I believe we need to get it right. So I think that picking a vendor should be right as well. And I don't, I think the, the procurement's done their job and I apologize. I'm sorry. Good dogs. So, um, I think that's important to note that, that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to interject. I'm looking at the, um, the flow chart. And, and after the, uh, employee complaint, which comes through the whistleblower hotline supervisor website employee or community member, I see then that the internal auditor, RSM, is taking care of fraud, waste and abuse to include the whistleblower hotline monthly report to the board and consultation with the school board attorney and the chief legal counsel. So as our employee, I think that they are, I know they recommended that, um, the whistleblower hotline. So I would definitely value their input and their collaboration with, um, our staff members, just as our school board attorney collaborates with members of our staff in order to get the job done, um, adequately. So that's just my comment at this point. So I see that I have three more hands. Dr. Atkins? Good morning.
Good morning. I think the other two hands were up before mine, so if you want to take their comments, that's fine.
Okay, then we have Ms. Vaughn and then Mrs., Ms. Gittens.
I, I just wanted to clarify, um, Ms. Jordan's take on what I said. I never said anything like, "RSM is in charge." Um, I'm going to say ditto to what Ms. Fisher just said. RSM works with these kinds of hotlines constantly. Um, we have never done it. I value their input. We make the final decision and it may well be Lighthouse. But I would just, again, feel more comfortable if this, since RSM will be working directly with this hotline, I would feel more comfortable to get their input as well for a recommendation. And that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. And now, um, Ms. Gittens, and then Dr. Atkins, followed by Ms. Patrica.
Sorry, superintendent can go first. I'll go after.
Uh, the board members, I, I think staff just simply wants to give you the best recommendation that it can. Uh, I absolutely have zero issue, issue working with RSM and would, uh, value their input prior to making a recommendation for the board. So, um, you know, just know that we're going to do that. Uh, it was actually a suggestion was made, uh, prior that I thought was a good one to me. And we were going to consult with them anyway. So, uh, we'll be happy to do that. And, uh, as in making that recommendation, you know, including, uh, their comments as a part of that. Um, I, again, I think, uh, the issue here, I just want to provide you with the best recommendation and I think their input would be valuable and we'll do that for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Okay, now, Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Patrica.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, I would just like to, uh, once you finish this portion, um, have my other questions regarding what was said previously. So, Ms. Patrica can go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Gittens, I have that written down. So when we get Ms., um, Bruno back, um, your question will be first. Okay, and Mrs. Patrica?
Just, uh, regardless of RSM's involvement, we do have a board attorney who will be advocating for us through this process as well. So it, it, this feels very micromanagey to me and, and I'm uncomfortable with, um, the level of involvement the board is suggesting.
Thank you for that comment. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, any comments from RSM? Okay, um, Ms. Bruno? Thank you. Um, okay, I, uh, at this time, I'd like to, um, say that, um, Mrs. Gittens has a question that I believe is, um, connected to either the review of the policy pieces or the flow chart. So, Ms. Gittens?
Thank you. I have three quick questions for Ms. Bruno. But I would like to, um, share with the board my thoughts on the flow chart. And Mr. Eldon, can you put that up, please? Okay, my, my concern in looking at the flow chart, um, that we received, the last one we received, is that there was not a direct, there was not an arrow or anything going from the complaint to, um, um, RSM, to the internal auditor. There was just a box on the side. So this is my suggestion. And please tell me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that the whistleblower hotline, which we've spoken about from its inception, was going to be that RSM or the internal auditor would be the, the receiver of the information from that hotline. And then based on whether it was fraud, waste or abuse, uh, we would, they would, uh, consult with the school board attorney or the, uh, chief legal, uh, counsel. If it was not, it would go into section B is supervisor, website employee or community member concerns. And those would go, and this is where I feel we need to change. Um, I think that before we investigate, that it would be good to know, is there something that is necessary to investigate? So I am suggesting putting that predetermination meeting. And if I understand that correctly, it is an opportunity, uh, a call, you know, something comes in and says, somebody, you know, did something. This predetermination meeting allows the employee and if they, you know, have someone with them or whatever, to say, well, this is what I, you know, say about the situation. This is my view of it. And rather than, I think we would save time and energy and, and a lot of different things if we did that predetermination to decide, is there something we need to investigate? But the, the issue I see with the whole thing, the way we were doing it now is that the complaint comes in, we investigate. As opposed to even hearing what happens, what has happened from both sides. And it's way down the line that the employee is allowed to give their, you know, their even side of the things. It's way down the list. We have predetermination where they're allowed to say, this is what, you know, they say, uh, bill happened and, and speak for themselves. And the critical piece in this whole thing is the manual, the process manual. I have asked for over a year, what's the process for, uh, investigation? This is interesting. All of a sudden I'm unstable. But anyway, um, can everyone still hear me? Okay, um, I have asked, and I've mentioned this to the superintendent, what is the process for investigation? Well, we don't, you know, we're working on it or we're going to have it or we're working with, uh, Miami Dade or we're working with this group to get it. But we still don't have an actual manual process as to what this investigation is. That is going to be critical to this whole process. And that's why, um, I think that has to be done. To say what happens when you walk into a building and say, this person, uh, needs, is on leave or has to go down to the district office to work or whatever, there has to be that manual. But I am suggesting that before we spend the time, energy and effort into investigating, that we at least hear the whole story and know what we're working with and then go into the investigative process. After that, then I, everything else on the flow chart is, is wonderful because you do have outside groups. You don't have, um, one group doing everything, you know, doing the investigation, doing the hearings, doing whatever. To me, it's, it's called an ethics, uh, employee ethics and equity. And that, that would provide more equity. You've got outside, um, groups. And one of the questions I had for Ms. Bruno is, um, you mentioned the review committee has thirty days. Is that a part of the sixty days that's in that initial, initial investigation?
Um, to address the, um, the flow chart that you prevent, that you presented, um, the first part is correct. The employee complaint through the whistleblower hotline will go to the, um, internal auditor, RSM for now. And they will pretty much, um, decipher base fraud and abuse. And then anything else will go to the, um, the employee complaint process. So that first part, uh, I, I'm fine with. We can add that to the flow chart. That is reflective of what the process will be. I have a question with regards to the second part. Uh, you have a predetermination meeting and then another predetermination meeting. The first predetermination meeting, what is your expectation on that first part? What are you looking for?
Okay, no, I think there is, there was an error there and that, that must have been the wrong one that was sent. Because that should have, um, predetermination meeting and the next one should be investigation.
I see.
Oh, I think, I think the wrong one was sent. I'm at this moment sending it out to everyone so they can see it, um, for, you know, their perusal. But yeah, it's predetermination and then the investigation. In other words, flipping on your flow chart, flipping those two boxes, um, from predetermination to investigation.
Okay, so with regards to the predetermination meeting, um, when the investigation, when a complaint comes in, presumably as part of that investigation, there is a discussion with the employee as to what happened and what's the employee's position. Are you looking to have something that completely outlines that there will be a part in that very initial process for the employee to give their statement? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I am.
So just to be clear, I think we can probably add that because I think that's part of the initial pro- initial process. I'm going to have Dr. Pruitt come up here as well to discuss that. And then the second thing with regards to the predetermination after the investigation, I think that's important because the employee will have an opportunity to see and to discuss the evidence that the investigator has found. So that's a good time for the employee to absorb everything that has been, um, brought forth, discovered, and then make a statement based on everything that's out there versus in the very beginning when they're, you know, nobody knows and nobody knows what the evidence is just yet. So I still would like to have that predetermination where it is, so the employee has the benefit of all the evidence. But I'm going to let Dr. Pruitt discuss the first part.
Well, and can I say that maybe renaming it, but something in there that earlier on gives the employee an opportunity to, uh, present their side of issues? And I think Ernie has his hand up as well, too.
Okay, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Dr. Pruitt. Um, so I just, I, I just wanted to comment, um, on that and what Ms. Gittens is saying. Say that no, no situation is the same. And there are cases that come to us that come after the employee has been talked to about something in particular and then HR is contacted. But there are times when we receive information that- But there are times when we receive information that, for example, if we receive information that a teacher or an employee of the district may be engaged in criminal activity. Law enforcement does not want us to have any contact with that employee, and so to do so would jeopardize any possible criminal cases. So, that's a situation. Another one is, the union at times will advise their client, if you will, that they do not, do not speak. So, you know, and that they ask them, because the union is comfortable with the process, and, and it is comfortable that their, that their clients do process rights or preserve through the process. And so, they're, um, they're comfortable about the way that it happens. So, yes, sometimes employees will have that opportunity, but sometimes they won't. And also, if the nature of the offense is such that by talking to the employee, it would give them the opportunity to get rid of information, talk, we've had situations where people that, they go and, if you will, talk to potential witnesses and sort of threaten them. We've had that happen in the past. So, again, I, I caution anything that would disrupt anything relative to student safety due to the nature of what, you know, might be there.
And that's exactly what I was saying, though, about needing the manual, the manual, and what I, in our discussions one-on-one, and we've talked about, okay, if this happens and it's a safety issue, or this happens and it's a legal issue, then this is where we go. And if it's not, then this is where we go. So, it's almost like, we need an additional flow chart that, or something in that manual that states, in this situation, we can only do this. In this situation, we can only do that. But it's clear and clearly set out. And that's why the manual and the process, um, is so, so very important.
Thank you. Um, thank you for that explanation, Dr. Pruitt. Okay, so now I have Mr. Altamont, Altmonte, and then, um, Ms. Git, Ms. Giavennelli, Dr. Atkins, and Ms. Patrica. Okay. Oh, yes, Ms. Bruno. Please unmute.
Madam Chair, just point of order. And, you know, what, I'm trying to get to the, to respond to Ms. Gittens' thing, and when our conversation keeps going on, um, you know, because she had brought up a point I wanted to raise earlier and respond to. We can wait, but my hand has been up for quite some time.
Okay, please, yes, yes, sir. Please, please proceed, Dr. Atkins.
First of all, we have a process document that, that Human Resources had since, I wrote it back in 2004. So, to say that we have no process is simply inaccurate. Secondly, Dr. Pruitt and Andy Brown have met with Ms. Gittens, as well as other board members, and explained this process. Thirdly, I want you to know that we are committed in the redoing of this process or this policy to draft an even more comprehensive document. So, I don't want us to, to have the notion, the inaccurate notion, that Human Resources has no process that we follow. We, we have been following a process document, again, since it was written back in 2004. And, and that has been provided, I believe. But again, that process has been reviewed to, with, with this board member. So, to be, portray it like we've been waiting for a year, I have to correct that for the record, because, you know, here, that's, that's a statement made publicly. It's not accurate. And so, and again, I know I'm gonna get a response, but, but these types of things are, are, should not.
Dr. Atkins, please unmute.
No, I finished my comments.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now I'm gonna go to, uh, Ms. Giavennelli, Ms. Patrica, and then back to Ms. Gittens, and then to Ms. Jordan, okay? Ms. Bruno?
Madam Chair, I, I did want to answer the second question from Ms. Gittens.
I'm sorry. Please do.
The question was with regards to the investigation process and the review committee time. It is not the same time. It's not part of the 60 days. It's a different timeframe.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Giavennelli.
Sorry. Okay, so, let's not forget why we're having to do this policy. So, I think the manual is very important, and I have not received the manual. And I think the manual does need to be tweaked, because it's not flowing with this chart, I don't believe. And I think that step by step, um, if it, there should be maybe a, a timeline or a schedule that if it's under investigation, an outside investigation with law enforcement, that could just be in our update. I think it's simple, um, and we will be getting a, a monthly report, and I think that that's easy, it's simple to just say, you know, there's, there's a situation and, and it's in, it's in a, um, outside investigation. So, and that's where it's at, in that process until that's done. And, and just keep a time, a date on that, so we know where, how long it's been in that process. So, I think the process is very important with this policy. I also, um, who is gonna, I, I have a couple of questions regarding who's gonna determine the legal sufficiency at this point, when it goes from the complaint to, um, RSM, and, and actually, who's gonna determine that? It needs to go to investigation. So, I think, um, what Ms. Gittens', um, suggestion could be very important in, in this process on where that's at. And I think that, um, it, that this last flow chart is pretty good, other than, I think that there's a, um, a missing piece on who's gonna determine the legal sufficiency. And then, I also had, um, in one, in the committees, I think that we need to have one of our, someone from one of our advisory committees on that. I think we need an outside person, not an employee of the district, to be involved in, of the review team or the outcome. And I don't know if we want that at the beginning, or at the, the outcome review, maybe. Um, I, I'm open, or in, in the second review as well, I'm open to see what the board, what the temperature of the board would, would want on that. But I think it's really important, once the investigator has his, has done his investigation, that, that is their, that is their role. Uh, they don't, they don't make a determination of what the outcome, they don't make any suggestions, that, that becomes, we have a, um, a schedule that if you make, like, if you were speeding, you would get, your fine would be this. So, an outline scenario of an expectation that would be in writing, so people know if they committed this. We do it to our students. At what point, when they do something wrong, we have our own guidelines for that, and they, and it's, and it's tiered. And so, why not have that for employees? I think it's a fair due process. I think that answers most of my, um, I would also, in the, somewhere, I want to see our board attorney involved, um, in the, in this process, at least initially. Maybe it doesn't have to stay that way, but initially, I'd like to see the board attorney involved. Uh, that's all I have, I think, at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Patrica.
Um, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page here. This is a policy. We are not approving a manual. We are not approving step-by-step processes. We are telling the superintendent what to do, and he is determining how it will be done. And then, in a year, we look at the processes he has put in place, and we determine whether those processes have met the goals that we set forward. Again, this feels very micromanaging. This is not an area that the board should be involved in. That's my first statement. And then, I, I kind of have a question or a statement of confusion. First of all, I can't see what Ms. Gittens put up. I, I can't read it on my screen. I'm unable to read it. Um, and, and does it not violate a part of the policy? I can't tell you the exact line of the policy, but there's a part of the policy that indicates that initial complaints that come in must be viewed in the light most favorable to the complainant. Does it not violate that part of the policy to have the employee give their side of the story before we determine legal sufficiency?
Ms. Bruno, would you like to respond to that? With regards to the initial complaints and the step-by-
Yes, yeah.
So, with regards to initial complaints, um, I think Dr. Pruitt explained some of the pitfalls that we may have if an employee makes a statement. And not only that, we want to be careful with employees self-incriminating as well pursuant to the Fifth Amendment. However, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'll, I'll ask Dr. Pruitt if she wants to make any comments with regards to the legal sufficiency and how that determination is made in the beginning part of the process. I think it's what-
My understanding is RSM was gonna decide on those calls.
But only voice fraud and abuse. So, I think they're asking about when it gets to the employee part. I think they're trying to, I think they're trying to figure out whether or not there's enough to-
How you, how do you determine if there's enough to move forward?
Right. So, there, um, it's not legal sufficiency relative, at the beginning, those things that come to professional standards. It's, the, the burden is probable cause, not legal sufficiency. And so, again, there is a, um, an, an initial committee, if you will, that looks at that to determine whether or not it's going to move forward. I mean, um, we honestly receive a lot more things that come to professional standards that we don't investigate and do not look at, um, once there's a discussion had with that initial, um, sort of intake review committee. And sometimes that is, you know, talking to the principal, if it's a school-based employee. Sometimes it's some, it's law enforcement that we consult. Sometimes it's, you know, somebody in the district office, if the employee works in, you know, in a particular division. And again, I cannot stress enough that no situation is the same. And there is, there's delicate pieces to all of it. So, what we've really tried to do, you know, understanding that there's concerns about the process, is the people that are, the initial information that comes in and the people that are looking at that are not people that are going to be on that outcome review committee. In other words, we've separated that out, so it's a different, um, different people that are sort of making that decision, if you will, but it's never done in isolation, and it's not one individual that makes that decision relative to that. But we literally get, you know, we get hundreds and hundreds of calls that come in that never result in an investigation.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Okay, back to Ms. Gittens, and then on to Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, first, let me say-
I was gonna- Point of order, Madam Chair. I was gonna respond to the other part, then, Ms. Patrica.
Oh, okay.
A question I think she had with regards to step-by-step process. This policy has to mirror the step-by-step process. So, this policy is gonna dictate how that, how the revisions to that step-by-step process will be made. So, it is, it's kind of together, even though it's two different things, but the, the, the manual is the one that's going to flesh out some of the skeletons that's in this, this policy. So, it's important that we put it together, or at least view it together, to make sure that they match.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bruno. Okay, am I back? Yeah, and I just want to continue on that, that, you know, I think that we, uh, established a caveat in the beginning of the meeting, that this is probably the first of several conversations that we'll have regarding this policy. So, we appreciate everyone's input. Okay, Ms. Gittens, then?
Okay. Um, first, let me say, it is my understanding that these are workshops, that we work, that we ask questions, that we try to find out things that we are unclear of. It is not my intention to fingerpoint or accuse or whatever. When I ask a question, it's because I don't know the answer. And rather than assuming an answer, we have a workshop in order to say, you know, what is this? Um, I also do need to say, I did speak with, I met with, um, Mr. Brown, Dr. Pruitt, and what I asked about was, if this happens, I understand there's different things that happen. And I said, do we have any type of, uh, a document or diagram that says that this happens, we do this, and this happens, we do that? And they told me, no, they did not, that they were working on it with Mr. Williams. When I spoke with Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams said, um, that he was working on it, and that they were looking at some of the processes that they do in Miami, since he used to, you know, work with them. That is what I'm saying, that I did not see. And I did ask for it a couple of times. I am not saying in public that they're flying by the seat of their pants. That is not what I was assuming. I said that I personally asked questions. I was told by three different individuals that it was being worked on, and I have not seen the culmination of that. And I feel that if we're moving forward with this other process, that we should either have that. If it's not legal that we have a process, then it's not legal. And I, I, you know, I can handle if someone says we can't do that legally. But just let us know what, what we do here and what we do there. And, Ms. Patrica, it's not that we are stepping out of our boundaries. We're working on a whole new policy, and it is our job to present policy. And that's what we're doing. We're working on, what is this policy going to look like? And then, we go forward from there. Everything that we say and every time we ask a question is not overstepping the lines and going into some area that we shouldn't be in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn? And then, Mrs. Giavennelli. Okay, two things real quickly. I'm going to request that after this, we get, um, a date from HR on when that manual is going to be completed, because, uh, really, to make any kind of informed decision on the flow chart, the very first thing, investigation process outlined in the manual. Now, we did get a draft from ECR, but we, we need at least a draft so we can make an informed decision. The second thing is, is a question. I am wondering why, on both the outcome review team and the second review committee, why it's all administrators? Was it ever considered to have an administrative recommenda, uh, administrative representative, one who is a Talc employee, not necessarily a union member, but paid, a teacher paid under the Talc, and, and Spalk? Because many of the people that come up for review, as a matter of fact, I hear say, well, not all, but, but a majority, I am guessing, are Talc and Spalk employees. So, I'm, I just wonder, could somebody explain, or maybe Ms. Bruno, the rationale for not including a Talc and a Spalk person in this, um, in these committees? And, Ms. Bruno, before you answer that, I just want to say that that was one of my questions that I had written down on the flow chart, so you'll be answering then for both of us. Thank you.
So, I, I do have Dr. Pruitt here, and she can talk to you a little bit about some of the restrictions and some of the things we need to take into consideration with this process and who's involved pursuant to our collective bargaining agreements. In addition, with regards to the HR manual, I do believe that we will have a draft of that manual available for the board to review prior to our next workshop on this policy.
So, relative to why administrators, the union would not support having their members making decisions about their members. That's not, that goes against, um, the, the fundamentals of, of, you know, of what they do and how they operate. And the reason for administrators is that to become an administrator in the state of Florida, there are certain classes- there are certain classes, training, things, experiences that those folks have more than, um, other people in other work units would have. And that, you know, is the basis for the reason why it is administrators. Um, and again, I, I just cautioned that, you know, a lot of this is, is part of our bargaining process. And so the input and the support of the union is, is critical. And so we've been, you know, working with them and vetting some of these, um, ideas. Um, so, but that is the, the main reason why that was the decision on who's in those committees.
So can I ask you a question then, Dr. Pruitt, regarding that? So is this in the negotiated contract or is it a statutory requirement? Because even in the court system, you know, you're, uh, you have a jury of your peers. So I.
No, that's, yeah, that's really, um, that's just the union's sort of stance on it because they get uncomfortable when they put their members in a position to be making, uh, potentially disciplinary recommendations against one of their own members.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Ms. Giovinelli?
Um, well, and I want to piggyback off that because I actually think, even in the real estate room, uh, under our, um, uh, governing, uh, disciplinary, we have someone of our peers there. Uh, and so it's another realtor usually, uh, and with, uh, other outside members. So, and, and so I would, I think that that's something that we should bargain, maybe should be in our bargaining then, because I think we should have a bus driver, a janitor, or cafeteria worker. I think that, um, and a teacher, uh, if it's a teacher situation, situation, I think it should be, um, equitable. And I don't think it is when, when it's just, um, someone that maybe can't quite relate to, um, that individual that's, um, being disciplined. So I think that's really important. And I, and back to the manual, I think that we need to have a process on, on the obje-, uh, on the objectivity and, uh, collecting evidence. And so, and that evidence needs to be free from any substantive, um, or subjective, um, influences. So, uh, I think our policy needs to mirror that. And, and I also, our policy also should, um, follow the statute, and, and that's part of the statute. The sta-, uh, it's quite clear the state has their guidelines regarding investigations. So, um, I'm writing on, I'm sorry, I've got all kinds of chicken scratch notes on my, as we've been talking. But, um, I think it's really important. That's why we have this policy in place because there's been issues. We have something presently pending because of the issues. Let's just acknowledge that and be able to, um, we're working on fixing it. And this is how we're going to do it. You know, it's, I think it's really important, um, what Ms. Bruno said about the manual should mirror the policy, our new policy. So I think that, uh, it is very important to, to get that manual, um, and see how we can, you know, how it works with our policy. We have issues where we've had policies that don't, that was against state statute. That needs to be still corrected. So we need to fix things, and it, this is a start. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bruno?
At, at this point, I don't, with regards to what Ms. Giovinelli said, I think that, again, this is a work in progress. We're looking at everything. I know we're working with, um, HR with regards to the manual. Some of these questions will be answered when we come back to the next workshop.
Thank you. Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to comment about, um, before Mrs. Giovinelli commented?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Patrica, then Mrs. Gittens.
I was first.
Ms. Gittens, please proceed.
That's okay. Go ahead. And I believe Mr. Almonte has his hand up. Thank.
I, I did not see a hand up for Mr. Almonte. Okay, Ms. Pat-, all right. Mr. Almonte, go ahead, and then Ms. Patrica. Thank you for your patience. Please unmute, Mr. Almonte. Thank you. Mr. Almonte, we can't hear you. No. Is your volume down? Oh, we can't hear you.
Mr. Almonte, you can use the call-in numbers in your Outlook appointment to call in.
Thank you, Mr. Eldon.
It almost sounds like something's in front of his mic.
In the meantime, Ms. Patrica, please.
I was actually going to just try to redirect the conversation. I have like, sort of line-by-line questions and discussions I wanted to have with the board, but I believe that, um, Ms. Gittens had a comment on what we've already discussed. So if you could come back to me so that we can sort of move the discussion forward, I would appreciate that.
I'd be happy to do that. Okay, Ms. Gittens, will you give your comment? Well, Mr. Almonte is calling in, please.
Thank you. I wanted to bring to the board some, uh, awareness again that, uh, Attorney Dupree Bruno did provide us on board docs with, I believe, five examples of policies that are existing in various, um, districts. And I would like to, if you get an opportunity, uh, to have you look at, for example, on Palm Beach County, page 12 of 42, there is a document, and it just says criminal investigations versus site investigations. It's very clear who should do the investigation and what. We already have a plethora of examples that we can draw from, which is why we were giving those samples. And I'm just saying, I look forward to us getting our version of this. And I believe a lot of questions will be answered. But again, this is not a, a battle. It's a discussion to try to get to a conclusion. And I would really hope that everyone, uh, Attorney Dupree Bruno had asked us previously to look at these samples and pull out things in each of these samples that we feel could go in our policy. That's, that was kind of the, the, the chore that we were given to do, not to reinvent the wheel, but that it's already out there. So let's take something from here and something from there. And then we have our own policy, our own manual, and that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, um, Ms. Bruno, um, when, when, uh, board members provided questions regarding this policy, then those you worked on with your team, uh, Mr. Williams and the people from HR, correct?
Yes, we had a meeting just yesterday, as a matter of fact, to go over additional things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now, Ms. Patrica.
My Boston friend is on the line.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Almonte, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
I'm just sorry. I'm just not seeing a hand or anything for you. Okay, I see the phone now. Thank you.
Okay, um, just a, a quick point. Uh, just going back to the, the flow chart about, uh, calls coming in. Through my experience, I've always seen the beginning, and it's reinforced by our conversations that I'm hearing today, is that that shouldn't, the calls, when they come in, shouldn't be just the internal audit. There should be internal auditor and legal counsel. And usually, that's where you flush out all those issues ahead of time before they go down the wrong path. For example, let's just say there's an investigation that already took place in the past. Well, why would we waste our time to redo all that work all over again and cost you money? And we can speak with the legal counsel to find out that it's already been done. We can review the documentation and move forward from there to make the recommendation. Or it could look like it's more criminal in nature, and maybe through a legal counsel, get advice that it should go down the path to go directly to law enforcement rather than through this channel itself. So my recommendation, based on experience, is in the very beginning, it's not only internal audit, it's internal audit and legal counsel together, um, reviewing the documentation that comes in. That would be my recommendation to you, Madam Chair and the committee.
Thank you very much. Point well taken. And I, and I think that's what this, um, May 25th flow chart indicates that after the employee comes, after the employee complaint comes in, uh, and goes through the internal auditor, then we look at consulting the school board attorney and chief legal counsel for legal sufficiency of the complaint. And then I believe Dr. Pruitt added that sometimes it's not a matter of legal sufficiency, but a matter of probable cause. So I think that if we continue to work through this, we will begin to understand more of the variables that occur and the difference in, like Dr. Pruitt said, no, two complaints are the same. So thank you for that. Okay. And now are you ready, Ms. Patrica? Okay.
Okay, so I've, I've literally got pages of questions. So obviously, we're going to need another workshop. I did send those questions to Ms. Dupree Bruno and, um, Dr. Atkins this morning. And I apologize for the late notice, but I am a work up against the deadline kind of girl. Um, why, and my lines might be different from what's in front of you. I've been told that, uh, there was yet another iteration of this policy uploaded last night, and I started on, on an old iteration. So, um, bear with me as we go through this together. Line 31 for you, Dr. Atkins. Can we, we have to give notice to parents at least once a year? And, and as they enter the district, can we make this part of our electronic back-to-school forms?
I believe we can, yes.
Good. Um, line 48 talks about providing this notice to school board candidates. My question is, who's responsible for that, um, for providing notice to candidates? Is it going to be on the supervisor of elections, or are we going to devote a district employee to trolling the district, the supervisor of elections website to determine when new people file? And, and do, do we even have a responsibility to people who are not in any way associated with the district yet? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's a good question. I don't know. Ms. Rothenberg? Do you want to address this question with regards to providing notice to those who are running for office for the school board? I think she's, she has some questions with regards to the covered individuals. Yes. Okay, so I think we're going to have to, um, flesh that out a little bit more as to that process on how things will be provided and the notices generated.
All right, I would think that on our website, a notification on our website should be sufficient for, um, potential candidates. Um, oops, something happened to my computer. Oh, there it is. Um, okay, line 52. Should this notice be provided to vendors upon award of the bid? Why wait until work commences? Why not provide it before the bidding process starts?
That, that seems plausible to me. That seems feasible, so.
So as I go through, if there are any objections or comments by board members, because this is supposed to be a discussion. So if there's any comments or, um, objections by board members, I see one. I see two.
And Ms. Morgan? I'm sorry. Ms. Morgan and then Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I, I was just going to say, I provided all of my comments like this, uh, to Attorney Dupree Bruno. And a lot of what I commented on, she took out or adjusted in subsequent, um, iterations. I'm not sure, uh, and then she basically identified for me from all of my questions and things that she thought were pertinent for board review and discussion. And I would prefer not to go through a question document when a lot of this is tail, that just, you know, it, it, should be brought, it should, should be taken out before the next iteration. Um, I, I was hoping that we would have an opportunity to discuss issues that arise out of this, not just, um, administration and technicalities. Thank you.
So in response to that, um, Ms. Morgan, some things were taken out that, that I didn't understand why they were taken out. So I was hoping that this would be a process where we could have a discussion about why some things were taken out, um, so that, you know, we as a board can come to an understanding that those items should no longer be in the policy. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patrica. Uh, go ahead and proceed, please.
Um, I'll try to stick, uh.
Excuse me one second. Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Patrica is still in process.
Uh, no, go, go ahead. That, that was the point. The point was to get.
Okay.
Questions.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have a question, just a suggestion, because, you know, I did send in questions and they were all answered, but this is not the document that I sent the questions in on. So I'm trying to follow on the second revision and now this third revision. And it, it would seem as, Ms. Patrica, and I, I'm like you, Ms. Patrica, I have by line, I, I still have things. So I mean, we, can we do like lines one through 100 lines? Is, is that too unwieldy to do it that way? I'm just trying to think of.
And also, in, in my response from Attorney Dupree Bruno, some, in response to some of my, my questions, she did say this is for board discussion.
Right, right. So I have one from the first page, but however.
Madam Chair, if I may make a recommendation, I, I would recommend administrative things, such as how are we going to post a notice or something like that? Perhaps we can send in questions and then staff can review that and come back with the process, um, for the next workshop. With regards to substantive things that we really need to make a, a decision on as to, do we keep this in or take it out? Perhaps those are the things we need to focus on.
Okay, all right. So does every board members do all? Okay, Ms. Giovinelli, did you have a comment on something that Mrs. Vaughn or Mrs. Patrica?
No, I was just in agreement. I, I would at least, I think we should go through line by line at this point. And so I'm supportive of what Ms. Patrica is doing.
Okay, then, um, board members, is there anyone who does not, who does not wish to do that?
I have a, I have a question or comment.
Yes, Ms. Gittens, please proceed.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I know I keep bringing this up and I keep getting pushed back from it. But this is why you have something like a Google document that you can see everyone's input and everyone's changes on a document. You can understand who changed what. And it is, um, you know, companies use it all the time that it's out there. You can see what so-and-so's comment is to it. It is secure. It can be secure. You have to be able to get in, uh, to see it. But I think that would help something like this. We're sharing a document. We're looking at, what do you think about this section and that section? I don't have a problem with going through it line by line now, but I still say that we need to, uh, digitally at times do something like this to share the document. That way we can see what everybody has said.
Okay, good suggestion. Um, Ms. Giovinelli, then Mrs. Morgan.
I would think that would violate sunshine, and I think that's the attorney, I'm pointing to the attorney because that's where she's looking. My.
Right, yes.
I would, and the community would not be able to see what we are changing and, and changing. And this way, like, I, it's, I think it's very important, what Ms. Patrica is doing right now, to go through with this line by line, because it's all about transparency. And.
Absolutely.
Google document would not be transparent. That, I'm sorry, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bruno, then Mrs. Morgan, sorry.
I was going to say that this suggestion was brought up last time, and Ms. Patrica did voice a concern about sunshine violation. After that particular workshop, I went back and I took a look at some of the sunshine, um, laws, and I would be extremely cautious. I would not recommend that we shared Google Doc, because as these comments are coming in, these are decisions that you're going to be making in the future. Would like to avoid that.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Morgan?
I, I just have to comment, Clara, on your cat. I, I just have to comment, Clara, on your cat. Great entertainment. Thank you. I, I believe that Attorney Dupree Bruno knows where, where the issues are in this lengthy document, having received input from all of the board members. I would like to have her manage the conversation, pulling out the pieces where she sees things that she believes the board needs to be talking about now, so that she can work with staff to address them in the next document. Anything that doesn't get brought up in this conversation can then be deferred to our next meeting. That would be my recommendation. We have an hour and 15 minutes. On my, there are one, two, three, four, five. In my responses from her, there are five issues she believed that I raised that the board should be discussing. I'm sure there are board members who have received similar comments from her. She knows from hearing from all of us where the issues lie, that we should be having a substantive conversation. And my recommendation would be that we defer to her and let her manage the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
I, I would just ask if we could please, we've already spent like 10 minutes trying to figure out who's gonna ask what questions. And I, I, I know it's really important for us to get all the questions out. So whether it's our attorney or Ms. Patrica, I wish that we could move on to the questions so we could get to work and get this process done.
Thank you for that. Yes, okay. So, Ms. Patrica, you have been extremely patient. We, would you like to continue?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing what everybody's saying. I will focus on the substantive issues only. And this is one of the significant concern for me. Line 96, covered individuals. How can we legally impose an ethical duty on parents, guardians, and community members?
Ms. Bruno, that was one of my questions also, Ms. Patrica.
Okay, so the, this is a very good question. And it's something that was discussed during the committee meetings. And some of the things that were discussed, for example, if we have a volunteer that comes into the classroom, they're already subject to some of the board policies, they will be a covered individual. If we have vendors or contractors, they're subject to as covered individuals. I think the question then becomes, how are we going to monitor community members or parents who are just coming to have lunch with their children and not necessarily volunteers? There is policy that discusses what can and cannot happen when you go into a school facility. I also have some concerns with how broad that definition in. This is why I think this is something that the board needs to discuss. I think that narrowing it down a little bit to volunteers, to contractors, to vendors, people who have direct business with the district is probably a better route to take. I don't know if any, you wanna comment or anybody else wanna comment on that? Okay, that would be my suggestion. But again, this is for the board to discuss. That was one thing that I did highlight.
Thank you. Okay, then Ms. Givenelli.
Well, and, and I had a question on my notes regarding covered individuals. What is that? Who is that? What is that detail? You know, I think, I think that's, that needs to be defined. And then I think we might be able to, it might help us better.
So if we look at, if we look at line 96, and it's subsection three, I'm sorry, subsection four, covered individuals. It is defined as parents and or guardians, applicants for employment, employees, union representatives, community members, school board members, outside contractors, vendors, visitors, and volunteers. The concern that I have would be visitors who are, you know, really are not doing business with the district and not actually volunteering. They may be on the premises, but we do have policy that discusses what happens on the premises. And then the other issue that it's kind of very broad is community members.
Okay, thank you. And now, Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Gittens.
So I'm thinking if you say covered individuals are individuals having business with the district, including but not limited to parents and or guardians, and just go on from there. Because I do like the clarification of individuals doing business. And then the subsequent, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Gittens.
No, I've, I've withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, back to Ms. Patrica.
Okay, so you'll provide some limiting language in the next iteration. Thank you. Line 99, in that same covered individuals. Again, I'm not clear on how we have the ability to govern the actions of people who are not our employees. So like the directors of Talc and Spalc, for example. They're not our employees, yet this specifically says we get to govern their behavior.
That's gonna be something with regards to the union. And I'm, I would ask somebody, any of you guys can add to that or answer that question with regards to the union? Mr. Rothenberg is gonna come.
Thank you.
Good morning. Relation to the portion about covered individuals, it does have a relatively broad definition that is later limited by, I believe it's subsection nine recommended penalties, that says that the, the board is only able to act on violations within its legal authority as listed in federal and state statute or school board policy. So the references to community members, visitors, union representatives, and others, that relates to on-campus conduct or conduct that would potentially cause a substantial disruption to district operations. I, I think that you're correct to, to have some concern about the, the application of that. I, I, I think that's warranted. And I think that's something that we would need to continue to, to work on, to address and to refine with those partners and members to make sure that they, they're aware of and comfortable with the expectations being set for them. But board policies, I believe it's 2.01 through 2.03, deal with visitors and on-campus disruptions. And so there was an effort to incorporate that language into there. For vendors, I know Ms. Dupree Bruno mentioned that there are already some things set in place for them. They're required to have Jessica Looper to act clearance or be under direct line of sight supervision. And so some of that would be, you know, kind of the ethical standards to which they would be held. Hopefully that answers the, the question.
So Mr. Rothenberg, would that be akin to like when we have a sign on the fence at the school, you know, no smoking, no drugs or alcohol? I mean, is that kind of like that when you have, when it comes to visitors? That there's some indication of the expectations on, on district properties?
Yes, ma'am. It, it's not intended to in any way extend what's, what's already in place. It's just meant to capture that when, when you're on district property, you're subject to rules as it relates to not disrupting the educational process.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Patrica.
It totally makes sense. And just clarifying language in there to bring it all together would be helpful. The next is line 131. Again, this was another board discussion. Am I now required to report suspected ethics violations by my colleagues?
So this is a board discussion. You know, generally speaking, the board has taken the position of not policing itself. But this is something that I do want the board to discuss. What are your thoughts?
And I'm sorry, was that line 131?
131.
Thank you.
And board members, as you're thinking about this, I do want to commend Mr. Rothenberg, who is the writer of this policy. And this was a pretty big monumental task. So he's done a fabulous job with this. So I thank him for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, thank you. Since we're all working from different documents, instead of referring to the line number, if you would refer to the section. So that it's easier for us to find what we're, what's being discussed. Thank you.
For speed. Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
When I first look at this, I think of, you know, by Florida stat.
They're losing you, Mrs. Gittens.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Now, yes.
Okay, I think of like the responsibility of a teacher. When you say Florida statute, you're talking about something that legally you have to do. As a teacher, you have to report if you feel there's some abuse or, or something of that sort. So I see this as by statute and by law, what do we have to report? And defining that and training our employees to know what things they need to report and, and bring to light. Because if we don't cover this legally, we leave ourselves open on the other end that something happens and you didn't report it.
I think with regards to staff, it's pretty clear we're mandatory reporters with regards to abandonment, neglect, abuse cases. And there's some other things that we're required to report. But I think that what Ms. Patrica's question is, because it refers to suspected violations of the Code of Ethics for Public Officers and Employees, how does the board want to deal with that? Are we now opening the door for board members to report other board members? Am I correct, Ms. Patrica? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, the language says all covered individuals are required. And so that tells me that I'm now required. I have zero issue with being required. I mean, this is a conversation I tried to have a couple of years ago. I have zero issue with it. I just want to put it out there on the table because it is contrary to what this board has said. We don't police each other. And I, I mean, if we're going to adopt an ethics policy in education, it should apply equally to the board as it does to employees and community members and vendors and parents and guardians. We should be on an equal playing field with them. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Morgan? Oh, okay, because your hand is up on there. Okay, in that subsection C, it looks like for public officers and employees is struck out. So can you?
It's, it's in there in subsection 4C. It's in there. It's not struck out. We did change the word employees at the bottom in line 136 and change it to covered individuals to make sure there was no distinction that we were only looking at employees, that this would apply to all covered individuals.
Okay, I'm totally in the wrong policy then because that's, okay. All right, thank you.
This could be something that the board wants to think about. And individually, if you want to ask me any questions or send me any feedback on that, I'll be more than happy.
Okay, board members, would you rather send the questions to Ms. Bruno or continue the conversation at this point? Those who want to send questions to Ms. Bruno, please give me a thumbs up. And, okay, and anyone who wants to continue the conversation that Ms. Patrica raised, please give me a thumbs up. Okay, so we'll continue the conversation. All right, so Ms. Patrica raised the question about reporting fellow board members. Okay, so I have Ms. Givenelli and then Ms. Gittens.
Okay, so I think this is where it's really important that we have guidelines regarding investigation. I think the investigation has to be in place and there has to be a manual that we, that's mirroring, mirroring this. And you can't just want to violate a board member on allegations that are not always fact. So I think that's really important and, and that, and allow due process in that whole situation. So this is a perfect example of, you just can't assume that someone did something just because somebody else said it, says it so, and without all the facts. And I don't think that, I don't know how that would work if we don't have a policies and guidelines regarding investigations. So I think that has to be clear and defined, and it's not. And that's why we have situations that we have already in place that, that's requiring us to do this. And this was one of the recommendation that was done by RSM as, as well, that having a whistleblower hotline. So you're gonna have whistleblowers, they can call and report board members for sure. I mean, I don't, and then, but look at that, we have to see the facts. So I think that, that's where this is gonna fall short if we don't have the right manual in place and policies or in processes in place to govern this policy. Thank you.
All right, so in addition to what Ms. Givenelli stated, there is a built-in process if there's a violation. That's what this policy is trying to address. However, there's another issue. What happens when a board member violates a policy? How is that board member going to be treated with due process? How are we going to get information and who's going to be doing that? So these are things that I think that the board needs to think about because we may need to add something that discusses how board members should be treated if there's a concern or allegation or accusation with regards to a board member and make sure that that board member also has the same due process rights as every other covered individual.
Yes, thank you. And, and that's why we're having this conversation, so that we can isolate those items that need to be addressed and so that the, the process manual then can be completed. Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I agree with the comments that were made. I have a couple of quick things to say. But yes, we need the manual. Yes, we have policies to tell us what we should do. But the policies, in my opinion, don't have enough teeth to say if you don't do the policy, then what happens? And I think we need to review that, and that's another discussion. And I agree with Ms. Patrica though, that if we're going to do this manual, this policy that we're discussing today, that it should be, you know, overarching to everyone that is connected with the, with the school district to be able to get their, their own, you know, due processes, Ms. Dupree Bruno says. And I would like to ask RSM, since you have, you know, dealt with this for some time, to weigh in on how this works in other districts or your experience in dealing with this and, you know, the board versus employees and the, you know, district, all of that type of thing. Can you weigh in for us and let us know your thoughts?
So RSM, anybody?
This is Clara. Hi. We'll have to get back to you. We typically don't get involved with this level of the policy when it comes to outside of internal audit. But we're more than happy to see what other, what some of the other policies say, too.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Ms. Givenelli?
Thank you. And then actually, and so for me, another issue is, you know, what actually happens when policies are not followed? Who's gonna be held accountable? This should also stand with the superintendent. If we're gonna, we want to hold school board members accountable, that it has to start with the superintendent. So I think that we're leaving that part out. I don't see his name in here. So I mean, and I guess he's a covered individual, but that's not actually in, in one of the, the, you know, the covered individual definition. So I think that's really important. If, you know, I, I think accountability is really what we're striving here and transparency. And so it doesn't eliminate anyone. And that is a big important issue for me, that we have accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
Superintendent is an employee, so he is covered by this, as is Attorney Dupree Bruno. She's an employee. She's covered by this. Board members are different. That's why I brought it up. Because we have been treated differently by our policies up to this point. by our policies up to this point or in terms of ethics up to this point. And again, I bring forward that we should be treated like every other member of the school district, every other member who does business with the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I had that. And as a matter of fact, I had sent that in my notes to Mr. Dupree Bruno. There was actually another place where it deals with... I'm trying to find it on this one, on 480, that might apply also. And it was under employees and unions. It might... Let's see. It's kind of hard to find on the, this third one. I'll tell you what, just let me find that and I'll talk later. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay. Board members, any other comments? If not, I'll hand it back to Ms. Patrica.
Well, I'm just wondering, do we have consensus? Is there agreement amongst the board that the board is subject to this policy? If not, we need to change the language.
Okay. We'll entertain comments regarding that. Yes, Ms. Giovinelli?
I can't support this until the, I know about the manual and what that process and allow the due process for, and the investigation be spelled out and shown. Because I can't... I would support it if I knew that the investigation was subjective. But at this point, it's not. So until that process is clear and clarified and defined in a manual and then I see it, then I can support it at that point.
Ms. Bruno, do you have any comments on that regarding statutory implications regarding elected officials?
No, with regards to the statutory implication, I think it's whether or not the board wants... I mean, the board already has guidelines and statutory mandates that it must follow with regards to ethics. The question is, how does the board want to be in this policy? And the concern is, if the board is part of this policy, which is probably a good idea, you guys should abide by your own policy, how are we going to investigate the board member? How will we investigate the school board attorney? How will we investigate the superintendent? Will it be the same staff that is investigating everyone else doing the same thing? So I think these are things that we need to flesh out a little bit, a process for board members and for the employees that are directly responsive to the board and have something that we can address. I'm going to think about that a little bit, talk to the team a little bit and see if we can come up with a proposal.
So looking at our constitutional responsibilities and rights and looking at the statutes, I think the process in place for elected officials involves the State Department of Ethics. And that's been my experience. So that being said, then, does that put us into a different category or not? Because I think employees are one category and then the elected officials as the oversight are already subject to some state laws. And so I'd like an interpretation of that.
And of course, the only person who can remove a public official is the governor. So that's the appropriate process for discipline. But I think some of the question is, you know...
Reporting one another?
Yes. Another. And if, for example, somebody violates a board policy that may not be an ethical issue per se, but it's a violation of board policy, which is, you know, addressed in this, how do we handle that? I mean, right now, the policy is that nothing happens. So this is stuff that the board really needs to think about. How do you want to address these types of issues? Because they may come up. Or if the superintendent has a concern about something that a board member did, how does he address it? It may not be an ethical issue, but there may be something that needs to be addressed. So those are the things that I'm talking about. Clearly, with regards to the statute, much of responsibilities are, it's very clear. You know, you report it to the Ethics Commission. The only person who can remove you is the governor. But there's other things that may necessarily fall under that category.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So Attorney Dupree Bruno, may I suggest that you put out, after this is over, you put out an email to the board telling them these issues, the ones that we need to continue to think about and perhaps discuss with you and/or staff so that we're all focused on the correct or not correct? We're all focused on common issues when we come back to the table for another discussion? Is that a fair request?
I'm okay with it. The board directs me to do that. We'll do that. I'm okay with it.
My concern is my notes will be different from... Ms. Morgan's will be different from Ms. Fisher's, but you're the objective person gathering all the information. So if you give it back... Anyways, go ahead.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah. And so, Ms. Patrica, may I ask you if you have any suggestions at this time, since you raised that question?
No. I think that the issues that Attorney Dupree Bruno raised are good ones. You know, is a violation of policy necessarily an ethical violation? Currently, we have zero consequences for a policy violation that is not also an ethical or criminal violation. So where does our responsibility lie? The way this policy is written, any suspected policy violation must be reported. To whom? Who does the investigation? All those questions that she raised are good ones. And I think that that's why we have a board discussion so that we can flesh those things out and get it into policy in a way that everybody agrees.
So I thank you for raising that. And I also believe that we look back up to our ongoing trainings with the Florida School Boards Association. I think a lot of these things probably have been embedded in other districts. But I think that we need to consider, as we move forward with this, the ramifications of, you know, the operation of the governance team and the perception of the public. Because I think that those are important considerations. And I just wanted to add that to the conversation. So at this time, I have Ms. Giovinelli, Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Vaughn.
Madam Chair, I would also just note as parliamentarian, we're quickly approaching the 11 o'clock hour.
Yes. Okay. So then, at 11 o'clock, are we concluding or are we taking a break?
Well, this was set for two and a half hours. So I don't know how the board is with, you know, going past 11 o'clock.
Madam Chair, I would have to request a hard... I think that this is a discussion where all seven of us really need to be deeply engaged. And I have a hard stop at 11:30. I will have to get on the phone at 11. But I cannot remain in this meeting past 11:30.
Okay. All right. So then, is everyone okay? If we take these next two comments and then we get ready to conclude and move our questions, to send them to Ms. Bruno, and then she'll send us out an email with a compilation of all of the important or the common concerns that we want to address at the next scheduled workshop.
I just have one more question that I think impacts the whole board in this policy that is going to require the provision of significant additional information for us to consider. So if you could take three more, that would be great.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay. So line 251, Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry, I don't know the section. Let me try to find it.
Regarding influence, influence and retaliation?
Yeah, I don't know.
No. It's the beginning of section seven. So that would be line 258. Just the beginning of section seven. It's both sections seven, both sections seven and eight. My question here is, why do we have procedures in policy? Policy is the what and the procedure is the how. This section seems to completely contradict paragraph 4F, which delineates the duties of the superintendent as opposed to the duties of the board. Policy is our guiding principle. It's used to set the direction of the organization. That's the board's job. Procedure is a series of steps used to methodically and repetitively achieve goals. These feel like steps as opposed to the setting of goals. We set the goals. The superintendent determines how. And earlier, Attorney Dupree Bruno said that this policy includes step-by-step process. And I'm not, again, I'm not sure why that would be included. I did do some research on, you know, the manuals that we receive from other districts are not policies. They are manuals. They are separate documents. I did research on those school districts' policies and I found nothing in there that included a step-by-step process. And I may very well have missed that. That's where I'm requesting information. If you, Attorney Dupree Bruno or staff, could provide us with policies like this from other districts so that, you know, if I'm crazy here and this level of detail is included in policies in other districts, that would be fine. But I did do an analysis of our policies. Anybody want to guess how many policies we have? Dr. Atkins, you want to guess how many policies we have? 198. 66% of them are three pages or less. We have no policies that are 16 pages long. The length and breadth of this policy tells me that we're getting involved in an area that's too detailed and not something the board should be involved in. We need a policy for education ethics. I am not arguing that. But we need a policy that reflects what a board should be doing and gives the superintendent and his staff the freedom to implement that policy. So those are my comments. I'll shut up now. And I do have to get on the phone relatively soon.
Thank you very much. And that was a really good point. And that was one of my points also to Ms. Bruno, was section seven particularly. Okay. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Gittens.
Okay. So I would agree, this is, it is long. It went from 13 pages to 15 pages to 16 pages. So that in itself is, I have to agree that it is long. However, we can't deny or forget the fact that we have had issues with investigations. Perfect example is the watermark debacle. If there was a proper policy in place and a manual that was followed, we wouldn't have had that issue because it was clearly illegal, that watermark incident. So I think that that's really important, that we are guided by policy and that the staff is also following a manual that we need to look at because I haven't seen it. And all these other manuals that other districts... I love Palm Beach County. That was one of my notes. I love Palm Beach Counties. But they have a whole Inspector General Department. So that was something I had brought up over a year ago. I think that DOE has a recommended investigation guidelines. And that would be my recommendation. Follow those guidelines. There's a chain of custody forms. There's witness forms. There's everything that's there that puts everything in perspective. And I don't believe that's been happening in our investigations. So I think that that is why we're having this conversation today and that it's a much-needed situation. And this is important. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. And I have to apologize. I forgot what I was even going to ask. It's been such a long time. But I do want to also see if we could add in about the reporting because to me, I think that's really important to know what these, with the line 131, reporting suspected violations, that we do make sure that it's not... It's done for the right reason and not just because we feel like reporting someone. And also, in that, we also had the one where it stated that the chair would be publicly announcing the people who did not go through ethics training. I'm not sure how that's going to take place either. How does the chair find out who has taken it? Who has not? Is it up to the board members to come to the chair when they've completed it to let them know that they have done that? So that was another question that I had. And it just goes along with all of this because it is reporting to the ethics. They all could be ethics violations.
Thank you. Good point. Anything else, Ms. Jordan?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes. First, I would like to go back to, just briefly, to the document that I shared with all of you. I understand and I've listened and heard about changing some of the things. However, I would like to see at least the two arrows that are showing the whistleblower hotline information going to our internal auditor. And then, if there's anything that is not broadway strip abuse, it goes back to the other side. I really would like to see that considered because my understanding is that's where RSM is coming. Well, they handle the whistleblower side. We handle the other side. I think part of our back and forth is because we don't have a specific manual per se. And some of the things that we have in this 16 pages, yes, it's long. And maybe we need to look at if some of those things in there were covered in the man... Need to be in the policy spelled out. So I think we keep going back. The manual itself clearly stated will allow us how to manage that. And not writing all the processes, but the overarching goal is to have something in place. And I think also, we're looking at two different things in the sense with the board. Our policies, we do have policies that, like I said, don't have teeth. You know, it says you're not supposed to do this, but then it ends right there. And that is our responsibility, not the superintendent or the staff to do that. That part is our responsibility. This overarching policy we're working on here is slightly different. We don't... If we have a manual, if we have the process laid out, it can easily refer to, see manual page such and such. See manual page such and such. And we can get this down to two pages. I think that's... Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gittens. Mrs. Morgan?
Madam Chair, I don't believe we've resolved with staff what it is they're supposed to do on the hotline. We haven't given them direction. I think the least we can do is tell them what to do, how to proceed, whether we expect them to do more.
Thank you. So, and thank you for reminding me of that, Mrs. Morgan. So I'll ask the board at this time for consensus. There was a recommendation that we vet the top three... The top three businesses that were in line for the hotline in addition to the one that was chosen. So is there an interest in all board members for us to proceed that way, to direct staff? And Ms. Bruno, to proceed that way? And I think RSM said that they would be happy to facilitate with that.
I just need to know if you... We did talk about having RSM assist with that as well.
Yeah, and that's what I just... Yeah, that's what I just said. Okay. So then, at this time, all in favor of vetting the top three vendors? So then at this time, all in favor of vetting the top three vendors? Please signify by saying aye. Three. And those who want to keep it our selected vendor, raise your hand.
This is Chris, Ms. Patrica. I am confused. I thought the superintendent said that he and staff would work with RSM.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so we're in agreement then that we will proceed and the superintendent and staff will work with RSM to get us more information. Ernie, did you have something? No, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so, just to be clear what I just said yes on. Yes, the superintendent did say he would work with the staff and RSM. It's not just to give us more information, but it's to specifically the information on the reputation of the top three and if there were any red flags as far as RSM because Claire said they worked or will be working in the future with Lighthouse. So I just wanted to be clear of what we're.
Yes, okay, so then I'm going to go back to Dr. Atkins and let him reiterate what he said before. Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Yes, Madam Chair, again, I would be, staff would be more than happy to work with RSM relative to the proposed vendors. And, you know, we would look, we have our list of five, you know, any experience that they have relative to any of those. And then make the, you know, make the recommendation based on their feedback. So again, I think more information is better and then we'll bring that information forward to the board.
Thank you very much. You make it sound so simple, okay. Ernie, did you have your hand up? Oh, okay. He's just smiling at us. Okay, so we have exactly two minutes. And so with your permission, I'm going to suspend good-of-the-order board members. And we'll continue this at our next scheduled workshop. And we'll work together with Ms. Bruno and Dr. Atkins to schedule that. Okay, Ms. Bruno?
Madam Chair, for the next time that we go through this workshop, I propose that board members send me their comments, concerns, and questions. And I'm going to formulate something so that we can go through these topics very, very quickly. Because we, we're only on page three, honestly. We haven't made a lot of progress, and this is a sixteen-page document. So if the board is okay with that, with me trying to direct that a little bit so we can go through some of the substantive changes.
Okay, board members, all in agreement with Ms. Bruno doing that? Please raise your hand. So I see one, two, three, four, five, six. And I'm going to assume that Mrs. Patrica has her finger up.
Which finger, Ms. Fisher? Just kidding.
One thing, Madam Chair, for line-by-line deletions, additions, if the board members can tell me which ones they do not agree with, which ones they have questions on, so that when you get the new document, it will have all of the things that need to be addressed in the new draft. So we can address everything. Because I really do want the board to look at every single word in this document. It's so important, so that it's important to the board and to district staff.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. And I just want to make sure that when we do that review, that we all are working on the same version of the document.
Yes, ma'am.
As with the others, okay. I think that'll be helpful, thank you. So I have Ms. Gittens. I saw, Ms. Vaughn, I saw your hand up, and then I have Ms. Gittens and Ms. Jivinelli.
Actually, what you, it's what you said, just, all right. So it's this third iteration, correct, that we have today?
Yeah, I think.
We're going to be looking at.
Right, so if we delete.
I assume that, but I just wanted to be sure that we're all on the same page.
So Ms. Bruno will provide us with the date it was revised, and then we'll be sure we all have the same one, okay? Thank you. And then Ms. Gittens and Ms. Jivinelli, before we conclude?
Yes, I just was wanting to ask the board, do we have some type of a timeline? I know this is a massive undertaking, but are we saying we are trying to at least have this timeline to do this or to have this finished? Or is this just going to, you know, keep going until we get it right? I kind of like to see where we're headed as far as time and needing to have at least some type of a finalization of it. So my question is, what is that? And what are we working towards?
So I'm going to let Ms. Bruno address that. I think we've sort of talked, this is a work in progress and there are some indications that our timeline may be a little different than we originally thought. So Ms. Bruno, do you want to address that?
We are going to move as quickly and as feasible as possible, but I want to make sure that every board member has their questions answered, their concerns addressed. So this has been in the works for a year. So if we have another month or two to be able to review it and to make sure that everything is digested well, then I feel very comfortable with that, and I'm sure board members will feel comfortable with that. Intent is not to delay. We are not going to delay for six months, a year, four months. We're going to try to move it forward, but I want to make sure that my board members are comfortable and understand and don't have all of their questions answered.
Thank you for that. Ms. Jivinelli?
So I just had a couple of things. One is regarding that, I think the manual is important. That's going to play a big part in this for us to be able to get, to understand. So I think that wears the manual in this timeline. And then I had something separate, kind of good-of-the-order, and I'm going to throw it out there real fast because I know we're running out of time, was we're getting a lot of emails regarding the task force, COVID task force. And I think that since we have a liaison, that that one person should be answering that. Or, and I know that, I actually spoke to Dr. Atkins, and they're talking about having a separate email for that. So if we get emails, I think one person should be handling that. And I think Ms. Vaughn should be that one person instead of all of us trying to answer it and we don't have the updated information. So I think even if we send it to the email or whatever, somebody want to talk about the process of that? And if you agree with me, I don't think we all should be answering, you know, and having different answers and different forwards to the superintendent. So maybe Ms. Vaughn can answer that. But in my opinion, is to have Ms. Vaughn be the one that answers those emails.
Right, she is our liaison to the task force. So Ms. Vaughn, comments?
Well, the only comment is you are right that it was my suggestion, Ms. Stillwell and I have been going back and forth, and I've been giving her some input on things that she's been sending me. But my suggestion was that we have a dedicated email address and I don't know if that means I'm going to be answering or maybe as a task force, that we can come up with several standardized answers for various questions, that sort of thing. Because honestly, except for the fact that we're going to be doing it, we don't have the answers yet. We just have, we ourselves have a lot of questions. But I just thought that that would be way easier instead of everybody saying, you know, the standard is going to be sent to the superintendent. And he, yeah, so that may be something that we have to say as a board, that maybe the new standard language will be, we have, we now have a special email address that goes directly to the task force. And as to who's going to be answering, maybe it'll be me. I, you know, I want to talk to the rest of the group on that, of course. But does that sound like something feasible when we get those? And hopefully, I'll say that this was brought up today. Does that sound feasible to the rest of the group that it's sent directly to the task force and not directed to the superintendent's office?
Board members, thumbs up? Yes, Ms. Gittens, I see you, okay. All right, then, thank you for that, Ms. Vaughn. That sounds a lot more efficient in retrospect. And I appreciate you working with Ms. Stillwell to iron out the kinks. Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Well, I wasn't going to bring up the task force until the next meeting, but since it was brought up, I do have a concern that when the task force was first brought up in our meeting a couple of weeks ago, we did not continue the discussion about the task force as an advisory board or whatever. The only thing that was done was discuss like who might be on it. If you go back and see the meeting, it was just stated that the superintendent would bring back some possible names of people that could be on that committee. We have never, as a board, had that discussion about the task force, and yet it is now going on. And, you know, people selected. And I just believe that we did not continue our discussion. And we, as a board, totally, all seven members, have not had input into that thought of the task force. And I believe that we should.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, and then Ms. Jordan?
This response is just actually to the vote that you just took. The task force, as we have it right now, is an advisory task force of you. It's not staff members on that. So if you're receiving email that you want staff to respond to, what would be happening is that email would be sent to the advisory committee or the task force, and it would not be coming to staff. So that's just, you know, a thought, you know, to consider. I know that staff has been working, Ms. Stillwell has been working with our ISD department relative to the email, so that we could establish one email. So she's been working with, or going to work with Dennis Osterhaus to do that so that we can have a, you know, a pandemic task force email response. So, and that was actually for staff to be able to respond to just concerns that people have relative to staff. So, you know, if, so if you are receiving emails that are concerns, then with the vote you just took, understand those concerns are going to go to, and like an advisory group, they're not coming to staff. If that's what you just decided. And that would, that's not what we were envisioning as far as that email because we envision if you get these concerns that you're going to want staff to handle those for you. And that's what we were preparing to do.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. That makes sense. And I know that Mrs. Vaughn is working with Ms. Stillwell. And so then, Ms. Vaughn, will you come back to us with some information as soon as it's done?
When I said it would go directly to a specific email, you'll recall I said, when somebody said, "And Ms. Vaughn will be answering," I mean, maybe, I don't know about that. But that doesn't, that doesn't preclude staff from answering. It's not going to be, I'm going to be answering all of them because everybody else on the committee, it's still a work in progress. But we are having representatives from all three zones. We have parents from all three zones, three students, students from all three zones, people from We Health and other medical foundation, and a couple of people from there. So there are a lot of different people. And certainly, you know, we haven't worked out, because we don't even have the dedicated address yet, exactly where it will go. But for instance, if I become the clearinghouse, I might know that, okay, this is about academic services. So I might just send it directly to Dr. Spiro. Or we have not worked out that logistics. And certainly, if there's something that comes to the board and it does get, and it does get forwarded, certainly you can get an answer as well. Nobody's saying you can't, but it's just, I think, Dr. Atkins, do you not agree that instead of one more step your office, that there can be a decision made on, you know, what particular individual it should go to and just bypass that one step or not? I mean, we are still working out the rules, so to speak. The first meeting, we're hoping, the first week of June, which is like next week.
Yeah, I'm confident that, you know, that our board liaison, Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Stillwell, can work out a process that will make a very efficient, very efficient system for the, how to handle those emails, so.
Yeah, and we're still, we're emailing back and forth and talking occasionally at least every day, if not more.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn and Dr. Atkins. Okay, board members, it is 11:12 a.m. We're twelve minutes over. I do see two more hands, Ms. Jivinelli and Ms. Gittens. Let's try to get this over by 11:15, please, because I know people have other commitments. Thank you.
I'll be real quick. So I, we just received, I just received an email regarding that, this very topic. So what, right now, we're just going to keep sending to the superintendent that we all want, I mean, to do? I mean, I think it's, I think it's, you know, we all could be getting the same email and I think it's a little redundant, but, okay, I mean.
We don't even have, right, Dr. Atkins? We don't even have that new email address established yet. It was suggested last week. So we don't even have that. So I think right now, just send it on, just say there's a task force and.
Yes, that's correct, just send them for now.
Yeah, I think that makes sense until we have a complete process. Yes, and we know that staff has had, has been a task force throughout the response to this whole pandemic, and this is part of our emergency situation. So thank you both for that. And then we'll look forward to further direction in the near future. And finally, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, am I to assume then by this conversation that the only input into the inception of an advisory task force on reopening of schools, that the only input from the board, there is no more input from the board? Ms. Vaughn is the liaison? Because to me, liaison means that you are at least listening to thoughts and sharing conversations back and forth. And the only time that we discussed this as a board was that one meeting. And we have had no other input in this advisory. And I know this is a discussion. I would really like to have this brought up at our workshop next week. And if not, I'll bring it up for good-of-order because I did not believe that everything was just going to be decided. It was discussed once, and there was supposed to be information brought back, and then we were going to discuss it. It is an advisory board, as the superintendent has said several times. And advisory boards, I believe, are set by the board as a whole. So I will bring this up on Monday, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Vaughn, as our liaison, will keep us posted, and it is still a work in progress. So I think we can anticipate by Monday that there'll be some more comments. So thank you so much. Okay, seeing no further, up, Ms. Jivinelli?
I just want to add real quick that I don't even know who's on the task force. So I guess that would be important to find all that out. So we'll get the details on that on Monday.
Right, absolutely, thank you. And seeing no other business to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. And thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Bruno, excellent presentation. And thank you for the HR staff and their participation. Have a great day.